Okay, everyone, can I have your attention? The time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this session of the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. Can everyone please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I just want to first announce that our town council meeting tonight is being streamed live via YouTube. For those at home, go to the town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link, please. I'd like to start off by sharing a couple condolences this evening. We lost a couple veterans since our last meeting, the first being Barbara DiPoli. She served in the U.S. Air Force and the U.S. Army, and during Iraqi Freedom, she passed away on January 14th. And Frank McAlpine, who served in the U.S. Army during the Vietnam War, he passed away on February 2nd. Can I please have a moment of silence for those two veterans and their family members Thank you. All right. We will start off with approval minutes from our previous meetings. We had a February 4th meeting, a joint meeting with the Council Finance Committee and the B.R. School Committee. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Striggle, second. Mr. Chase, any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And following that meeting, our regular town council meeting minutes for February 4th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Loretta, Mr. Second. Any further discussion on the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Couple announcements. Again, as I mentioned at the past couple of meetings, to the citizens of Bridgewater, please complete your census as soon as possible so an accurate street list for 2025 can be published. Residents who have misplaced their census or did not receive it because of a recent move, please contact the town clerk's office to update your census record. And our dog licenses are still due for 2025. Please license your dog by February 28th to avoid a late fee. Late fees will begin on March 1st. Dog owners, please make sure you have a recent rabies certificate on file with the town, with the town clerk's office, I should say, and we do receive them for local vets, but if you're not sure, contact the town clerk's office. And as an extension of my president announcements, the vice president has a couple comments he'd like to make before we move forward the rest of the agenda this evening. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to address some rhetoric that I've seen or received regarding resolution FY25-007 affirming Bridgewater as a welcoming community for all. There'll be time to discuss the resolution later on at the meeting, but I wanted to be clear with folks that this resolution does not make Bridgewater a sanctuary city, nor is it designed to promote any specific diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. These interpretations, while understandable, given today's political climate, are simply not the reasoning behind this resolution. This resolution is about reaffirming something that has always been true. Bridgewater is a town that values respect, inclusion, and community. It does not change any laws, policies, or enforcement practices. It does not alter how we handle public safety or governance. What it does do is put into words a commitment that many of us already live by, that every resident, visitor, and worker in our town deserves to be treated with dignity and respect, regardless of background. This resolution does not override federal or state law. It does not prevent law enforcement from doing its job. It does not create new policies. Instead, it reflects the fundamental values that make our town strong, values of unity, fairness, and neighborly support. Bridgewater has always been a place where people from different walks of life contribute to our shared success. This resolution simply acknowledges that fact and affirms our commitment to treating each other with fairness and decency. So I welcome open discussion, and I encourage everyone to engage in this conversation with an open mind. If there are specific concerns, I'm always happy to address them, but let's be clear, this is not about dividing our community, it's about reinforcing what makes it great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. So that's all the announcements from the president's chair at this time. We do not have any proclamations to make, so we will move to citizens' open forum. Again, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public climate period. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. If you'd like to step up, please again state your name and address for the record, and please keep it to three minutes or less. Your floor is yours.
Hi, yes, my name is Janice Campbell Means. I'm from Franklin, and I'm requesting to speak. I'm chair of BCCR.
Yes.
I would make the motion to allow Ms. Campbell to speak.
Second.
Ms. Striggle, second. All right, second by Ms. Striggle. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening all, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Once again, my name is Janice Campbell Means, and I am here representing BCCR, Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights. When you walked into the building tonight, you walked by the only object on the walls of the Academy Building. It is the proclamation that BCCR presented to the council a few years ago that a hate incident, after a hate incident happened in town. The council approved it, and Bridgewater State University framed it. It states, "Be it therefore resolved that the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, is declared a community of civility where intolerant speech and behavior are unacceptable, thus ensuring that our town remains a respectful place to live," excuse me, "live, work, attend school, visit, and conduct business." We are here tonight to say that we are very concerned about some of the actions of the present administration in Washington. One example is the rush to eliminate all aspects of D E I from all government agencies and policies, relying instead on merit in hiring and education advancement. On the surface, that sounds, what sounds like a reasonable approach can actually be considered a license to discriminate since minorities have historically been shut out of good-paying jobs and good schools. Another example is the elimination of support for transgender individuals, including healthcare. What is very troubling about both actions is that they came about by the executive order with no open discussion by anybody ahead of time. That is troubling on a number of levels. These executive orders and others will have devastating consequences for all affected. Further, we are worried that the actions in Washington will filter down to our town. As I am sure you are aware, the Proud Boys, designated as an extremist white supremacist group by the FBI, left stickers around town a number of months ago. And when we, as a group, stand out near the common, we sometimes get hateful responses. Obviously, we believe in free speech, but not in hate speech. BCCR, as a civil rights organization, believes in the First Amendment, but at the same time, we recognize that various forms of discrimination against minorities have been a part of our history since the beginning of our country. We feel strongly that people through our elected representatives have the responsibility to continue to make our country more inclusive. We ask that you, our governing body, continue to support civil rights in this town as your predecessors did when they approved the proclamation. I leave you with a quote from Eleanor Roosevelt, "Where, after all, do universal human rights begin? In small places close to home." Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Anybody else that could come up and speak?
Marilee Kenny Hunt, Eddie Austin Street. And very briefly, just because I want to say some nice things to you. So first of all, thank you for that definition of the proclamation downstairs. And secondly, I texted each counselor and asked you to do something about the fountain out in front, because I'm president of the BIA, and we'd like to see it restored and getting going, and I had noticed it on the agenda for tonight. So thank you for that. That's really appreciated. And thank you to each of you, the ones who responded to me, to let me know that you actually received it, because I think that's a really nice thing. And then I want to thank our acting town manager, because when I send things to her, she responds to me right away, and that is a brand-new thing to happen in Bridgewater. So I really appreciate it. Thank you so much, and that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Marilee. Anybody else that could come up and speak? Dr. Hunt?
Carlton Hunt, Eddie Austin Street. Thank you, Council Murphy, for your clarifications. And I had a really great meeting today with--
Shh. Please in the audience, so I can hear. Thank you.
Is it Hunt?
I think so.
Okay. I didn't know what was--
Yeah, I can hear you now.
I get four seconds back.
No worries.
I had a really great meeting today with Ms. Robinson. We like to talk about after-bly things. And one of the after-bly things that may or may not happen, and I'm quite concerned because we have, the CPA, CPC, whom I'm a committee member of, paid for the acquisition of the old mobile station, also known as the Summer Street Park. The town, thankfully, was awarded half a million dollars to upgrade that park. But in looking at some of this thing, and that we have, in the CPC, the law requires a restriction be put on that property when you acquire real property with CPA funds. So we haven't got that restriction yet, and I learned some things today. I really thank you for that, to get it done, and I'm not going to go down that road. But with respect to that park grant, it was awarded back in the fall, early winter, and it has some language in it that's very specific, and it costs money that we can access this fiscal year. Specifically, it requires a submission of final design and specifications before going to bid, together with required permits for the construction phase and final billing for design work by June 1st, 2025. So I have a simple question for everybody. What is the plan for completing the park design and specifications for submission by June 1st, 2025? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Anybody else that could come up and speak? Please come up.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Beryl Domingo, 36 Saddle Drive. Firstly, I want to thank you for your commitment to serve the town of Bridgewater and all of its residents to the best of your ability. Secondly, I would like to speak to the item on the agenda under new business, a resolution affirming Bridgewater as a welcoming community for all. I'm an immigrant, a woman of color, and a parent of a transgender child. I fill a lot of categories of diversity in Bridgewater. Since I moved to this town almost 40 years ago, I've always felt welcome and safe here. My kids grew up here, went to school here. We made a home here. During troubling times in the past, councilors before you have voted to affirm Bridgewater to be a town where everyone who lives and works and goes to school here are welcome. Today, we're experiencing challenging times again. I and many others like me would like to continue to feel like we belong. To that end, I want to thank you in advance for your positive consideration to once again declare Bridgewater as a welcoming community for all. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that could come up and speak? Sam?
Good evening, councilors. Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. I'm unprepared. I have no papers. Wasn't sure if I would speak tonight, but I want to especially thank, first of all, all of you for your service, but particularly tonight, to thank Mr. Murphy for bringing forth the new resolution and for your statement at the beginning to clarify what that means for us in Bridgewater. I don't often share a lot of personal stuff, but what's been happening at the national level has bothered me a lot. I'm sickened by it. I can't stand it. Our country is going down the tubes, but I live here, and I want my town to stay strong and stay welcoming and promote togetherness, not division. So I hope you will support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else that could come up and speak? Please.
Karen Siegel, 75, Three Rivers Drive. Thank you all. I know there's always so many things we have to tackle. Newer to the town council meetings, I try to get to them when I can. I found out about this resolution on a Boston, on a Twitter page, on a Boston page. I feel like our community page is not transparent, not user-friendly. I would really appreciate if we could take a look at how we can be a little bit more easily to be involved so that we can communicate on it. There was no way to make any comments or have any feedback with what's, so I just appreciate that. I particularly was not happy finding out about it on a Boston page. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that could come up and speak? Please, come forward.
My name's Jim Wilder, 185 Curve Street. By your own explanation, sir, you say that this doesn't change anything, it doesn't really do anything. My question is why? Why do you need to write this resolution? What is the purpose? Discrimination is against the law. It's been against the law for half a hundred years. It's illegal in many state and federal laws, and the language in your resolution says regardless of federal laws and policies. I have a problem with that. I think it opens the town to a lot of legal problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilder. Anybody else that could come up?
Sorry, I think--
No, just thanking you. Come on up, please.
Hi, my name is Kelly Haley, 5 Jaclyn Way. I appreciate you explaining the new resolution. My problem is the same as was said before about transparency in the town. I also found out about it on a Twitter page, a Boston Twitter page. It really wasn't on Bridgewater residents. Somebody did post, and I think it was either taken down or comments weren't allowed to be made on that post. I think we should be discussing this as a town. I think if this is truly a resolution that you're going to pass, I think it should be down to a town meeting. Like, everybody should be able to vote for this. I feel that it's a very inclusive place to live. I came here from Brockton 20 years ago. I didn't have much growing up. I felt like this was a very inclusive place to bring my kids. We've never had an issue with diversity that I know of, and I just think that we really need more transparency in what we're discussing. I would love to know more. I'm going to get more involved with town council meetings, and I just think we need more of that on the residents' page or somewhere else. I couldn't even find where the meeting was on the Bridgewater Mass org page, so just my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else that could come up and speak? Go once, go twice. All right. Thank you for those that came up to speak. We'll also have a chance at the end of the meeting for further comment from the public. All right. We do not have any appointments, but we do have a hearing to address. So we have General Ordinance D.FY25-011, General Ordinance, amend Chapter 300, Article 2, truck exclusions. This was Advertising Enterprise on February 3rd. Rules and procedures reviewed and voted 3-0 to approve at their 12:12 meeting. I will go ahead and open the public hearing here at 7:21. This is Mr. Lindy's ordinance, so I will turn it over to him if he wants to make any comments on it. Mr. Lindy?
Let me just go to the page, please. Just find it. Hold on one second.
Page 17.
17. There we go. Okay. So I was asked by constituents in my district in the High Street area to ask to deal with this issue in terms of, there's a lot of truck traffic on High Street, and the town of Bridgewater submitted a request in June 2024 to the DOT for approval of a 24-hour heavy-duty truck exclusion for High Street. The 24-hour heavy-duty truck exclusion was approved by the Mass DOT on September 25th, 2024, and is therefore ordered that the town council assemble votes to amend Chapter 300, Article 2, truck exclusions, to read as follows. And it basically goes through definitions, restrictions. The definition is any heavy commercial vehicle having a capacity, carrying capacity of more than two and a half tons. The restrictions are the use of operation in heavy commercial vehicles having a carrying capacity of more than two and a half tons are hereby restricted 24 hours per day on the following named streets or parts thereof, Hayward Street from the northern town line to High Street, High Street from Broad Street to Route 104, Plymouth Street. The exemptions are Section 1 would not apply to heavy commercial vehicles going to or coming from places upon said streets for the purpose of making deliveries of goods and materials or merchandise to or similar collection from a budding land or buildings or adjoining streets or ways to which the access cannot otherwise be gained, or to vehicles used in connection with the construction, maintenance, and repair of said streets or public utilities therein, or to federal, state, municipal, or public service corporation-owned vehicle. As you all know, the highway barn is over there, and Section 4 calls for violations and penalties. The penalty for violation shall not exceed 75 for the first offense and each successive offense. The enforcement officer of this section shall be the police department. This started at the town council on 11/12/24. It was referred to Rules and Procedures. It went to Rules and Procedures, Fred's the chair. It was voted 3 to 0 to recommend. The town council referred it to Advertising on 1/7/25, and today is the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Complete description. Any general questions from the public in regards to what was read right there? Seeing none? Any public speaking in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none? Anyone speaking in opposition of this ordinance? Seeing none? Any questions from any town councils on this ordinance? Ms. McGrath?
Yes, Mr. Lindy, would that make more traffic on Plymouth Street?
I'm not a traffic engineer.
Yeah, no, yeah. I mean, again, it's just keeping the large tractor trailers out of the neighborhoods of High Street and Hayward Street, because those roads aren't really designed for that type of use of those-sized trucks. Keeping them on 104 Plymouth Street would be more advisable.
Because I live on Plymouth Street, and it's a nightmare now, and they go way too fast, so that would just bring more down. Safety issues--
Unfortunately, that's Route 104, so that's the main road that they need to travel by. It's just, again, it's keeping them off the smaller roads that connect 18 to 104.
So what study did you use for this?
What study?
You said you did a study?
No, we were asked by residents of the various streets. High Street is not, other than the part that was fixed for the dam, is not in good condition whatsoever. Hayward was redone a few years back and is in better condition, but the residents, when I was out walking the neighborhood, that was the question I got on both streets.
So it says heavy vehicle exclusion study. Could I do that on Plymouth Street?
I'm sorry, that again?
The study that you guys used for High Street, could I implement that for Plymouth Street?
I don't think that's probably possible, because that's Route 104. That's a state--
You can't--
--state route. So this is being more of a residential neighborhood.
So it's a state route from the gravel to the college?
Right. Yeah, I don't think we can affect that--
I'll have to check into it.
Yeah, you'll have to look into it, but I don't think we can affect Route 104 traffic.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I will close the hearing now at 7:26, and I will entertain a motion to approve--
Make the motion to approve.
Mr. Lindy, do I have a second? Ms. Striggle. Any further discussion on the item? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 8-0. Thank you. That concludes hearings for this evening. License transactions, we have none. We will move to presentations, and we have a tree committee presentation by tree commission, tree committee chair, Ray Gimmins. Ray, come on up.
Can I, let's see. How am I going to do this? I might add, just starting, my biggest fear of doing something like this is the technology. The fact that it's up there--
It's a miracle.
Life is good. I don't know, any of you saw the movie Space Odyssey, the 2001 Space Odyssey, 1968, where Jim tries to get back in, and the computer hell says, "I don't think so, Jim." That was a telling of the future. Anyway, thank you for giving some time to, let me go over the tree committee with you. I might add that you may want to do this with other committees, just for your information of what's going on and for the public. For instance, the Open Space Committee, they're all, they're a bunch of committees out there which work with people, they have no idea what they're doing, I think. It'd be good to know. Anyway, the tree committee.
Roughly two years old. It started maybe three or four years ago when I was on the planning board, you know, the large warehouse on Bedford Street. They came in, they wanted to build it. We said, "Fine." They wanted to cut down eight acres of trees. I said, "How about some mitigation for the trees?" And they gave us $25,000, and that's the money that the tree committee, plus a little bit extra, that we're using right now. Point was, once the money was given, we had to have some means of how to spend it, and past town manager set up the--
Use the microphone.
Can't hear.
I don't like microphones either. All right.
You can hold it, too.
Can I hold it?
Yeah.
How do you do that?
Just take it. Grab it.
Not at the top. Just grab it.
There you go.
And hold it near your mouth.
There you go. Just hold it up a little closer. Like Bob Barker.
All right. All right. So the tree committee was formed, and we had to have the means of spending the money, and that's part of the reason why it was formed. I will add that the, you should, on our website, the tree committee is this. It says, "The Bridgewater Tree Committee was formed to develop a comprehensive tree management program for the town of Bridgewater's public trees. The committee shall advise town officials, multiple-member appointed bodies, and the general public to promote activities that encourage the planting, care, and management of all existing and new trees." That's our goal. This is the tree committee right now. There are five potential voting members. We have one position open, and I'll come back to that in a minute. And then there are non-voting members. Past town manager rightly put the highway department head on the tree committee. He's very important, Paul DeCosta. And Bill Malte is the tree warden, sort of, right now. And of course, Josh is the person at the, in the superintendent's, superintendent, town manager's office. That's our liaison. He's very important. William Penn, just throw him in. Settle Pennsylvania in the 17th century. Why is he important? Well, he decided, he told his colonies that if you're going to cut down five acres of trees, you must keep one acre. And Philadelphia was planned as a means by which they would have squares, tree-lined streets, and so forth. This is the 16th century, and it's that way now. So my only point in bringing this up is that the idea of having trees to beautify towns goes back a long ways in this country. The importance of trees, very quickly, I'm going to go through this. Climate, clean air, the water supply, soil erosion, buffer as noise. If you, if, sometimes when I go hiking, if you go to World's, Land's End, World's End in Hingham, it's wide open, except there's one treed area. If you walk through the treed area, just a few weeks ago, when I was going through, once you stepped outside of it, you hear the noise of the trees. You hear what's going on outside. The trees buffer the noise. Keep cool air, benefit wildlife. You want birds, you're going to need trees. Increase property values. They have done studies-- They have done studies that having good landscaping and trees does increase your property value. Strengthen community ties. Reduce stress. Not all the time. That's our house. Took down the power lines a couple of years ago. Way it goes. Wait a minute. Bridgewater and trees. Four-legged tree on Summer Street. I believe it was the 18th, late, in the 19th century, they tied two elm trees together and it grew together. Bridgewater Proven Association is important. They're the ones that have been planting trees. It's the responsibility of town also, but I just want to make it clear to you that they've spent a lot of money in helping this town, in particular, as you know, the fountain that we talked about, the, Mr. Hunt talked about the fact that they're redoing the park near the old mobile station. They've done a lot. All right, one of the things I think that a lot of people are not aware of is the statutes or laws that we have regarding trees, and there are a number of important ones that the public should know in particular. The Zoni Act was redone a couple of years ago, and zoning, in the zoning act, there is, in terms of site development, they do, we do require that we take care of the land when building is going on. What's been added, and I've underlined this, this was added when I was on the planning board and helping with this, as mitigation for tree removal, an applicant may be required to make an appropriate payment in lieu of, as a condition, of any special print or site plan approval. That's important because we were told when we asked for mitigation, mentioned the Bedford Street lot, that it's best to have it in writing in terms of the process, and so we have done that. Town code, there's a shade, excuse me, shade tree ordinance that we got, which takes care of the town trees, in other words, the street trees. I don't, the public probably doesn't realize that if you cut down a street tree, that's a violation and you can be fined in this town. The planning board also has regulations in terms of when a developer comes in and puts a subdivision in, they're required to take care of, obviously, the tree cutting, but also to plant trees in the development. I'm not going to, you don't have, I'm not going to go through this, but there are definite requirements. They require, they require street trees, in other words, they're required to put trees in. I just want to show you this. This is, I believe, either Cross Street or Fourth Street, how trees have been kept when houses have been built, fine. A small subdivision with street trees that have been planted, required by the planning board. Obviously, it's not in bloom now, but you can tell that when it is in bloom, it's a pretty street. Here's another street without trees. It's just an example of the difference. Trees are important, just in terms of looks. The tree committee, we've been in operation for two years. We believe we've done some, we have some accomplishments. There's a lot of work to do. Let me go through these quickly, one by one. Arbor Day, you may recognize this gentleman here. This is the Arbor Day of 2023 in Marathon Park. Arbor Day 2024, Williams Elementary School. Well, we also had a contest with students to do drawings of trees, and I will tell you that on February of this year, oops, our student is up here in the DCR calendar. We're a tree city. We have to apply every year to become a tree city. The application for 2024 has gone in. We'll probably know in a couple of months whether we're accepted. We probably will because we've met all the qualifications, but that's important. It's important. And by the way, the signs like this have not gone up. They will be going up soon. You'll be seeing them on the entrance of various streets coming into Bridgewater. The past town manager suggested that we rewrite the Chapter 290 on shade trees, which we have done, and it's been sent into the present town manager. We've also proposed a tree mitigation schedule that would go into our statute so that, obviously, when trees are cut down, we would require certain compensation for them. We've sent the planning board, and it's been adopted, a list of trees that we think are good for the town. We've planted some trees on Broad Street, planted some trees on Main Street. Senior Center, we gave the senior center $6,000 to help plant trees and plants around there. We've had a forum at the library last year. We intend to do another one on April 1st, and you're all invited. It'll simply be on, help people how to plant trees and take care of trees. We have some concerns. The tree warden is an important position. The state requires towns have tree wardens. I will say that the present town manager has been extremely helpful, and we think we will be in the process of getting a, we will be getting, in the process, a on-call tree warden, and that's a move forward. It really is. That's important. Another thing that the, the way the tree committee was set up, we are required to have an arborist, or it's either a certified arborist or somebody that's qualified to be on the committee, but the way the town code was written, you have to be a town resident, and that's been changed, I believe, at the last meeting, finally. But by pure chance, we now have a potential candidate in town, so these two top concerns may be solved. We'd like it someday to do a tree survey. It's important. That's probably going to be done by an outside firm. It's going to cost some money. We'd like, at some point, an established budget. We're working off a mitigation right now. We cannot do that forever. Ideally, we'd like the forestry department re-instituted. There was a forestry department up to the early 90s. It's gone. We think it should be re-instituted and that the, we pay for a bucket truck. And we obviously want to do more education with the public in terms of trees. Just quickly, I'm not going to spend time. These are the responsibilities of the tree warden, and there's a number of important responsibilities that tree wardens can do for the town. One thing in particular, number four, hazardous trees. If there are hazardous trees in town, they should be taken down, identifying them and then should be taken down. I might add that the National Grid cuts trees. They have their own way of cutting trees, but they do contact us, the tree warden, to let them know that, to let us know that they're coming in. That's another important part of the tree warden position. We want to educate the public, and the form is one way. We want to do a mailing, we want to do a number of things so the public is educated regarding trees. For instance, they should know what type of trees, I'm sorry, let me distinguish. We are talking about street trees, public trees that the town has control over. We're not talking about private trees. If a person wants to plant an oddball tree on their, on their house lot, that's fine. That's up to them. But we want people to know that if they do, even if they do want to do their own planting, that they should plant certain types of trees for this area. We don't want invasive trees planted, and how to plant and care for trees. Right way to plant trees, the wrong, the right way to plant trees, the wrong way to plant trees. You sometimes see people volcano their tree. It's going to kill them eventually if you don't do it. So education is important. This is a shot of the common, I'm not sure when it was taken, probably, could be late 19th century, early 20th, trees in front of the Academy Building here. We think that Bridgewater is obviously a beautiful town, and we want to keep it that way. Trees are important. The town has to take responsibility for some of these trees. The cost involved in caring for trees, planting trees, believe me, is minimal in terms of the rest of your budget. We realize that the budget is tight, it probably always is, but a little bit of money spent on the caring and planting of trees goes a long ways. So we appreciate your help so far, and we hope that we'll get it more in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Appreciate it. I'll just open up any quick questions from any councils for Ray before, sure.
Just a thank you to Ray and his committee for doing this. It is important, the look of the town, especially in safety and just the types of trees. Had a slight education right here, right now, so looking forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lindy. Any other councils? Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Ray. I appreciate you coming in. I'd love to see you get into the schools and do this, and so the kids can start learning at a young age, because, I mean, there's stuff that I had no idea about, and I hike a lot, so we'll have to get you into the schools.
Okay, thanks, Ms. McGrath. Any other questions from councils? Thank you again, Ray. Great presentation. Thank you so much. All right, moving on with the agenda, we come up to town manager's report. I will turn over to our illustrious town manager for her report.
Starting with the fire station update today, Mr. Ruley had other obligations tonight, so he couldn't be here, but I'm standing in for him. The report that you receive every month is in your packet. Couple of things I would highlight is that even with the cold weather that we've had and snow, the project still remains ahead of schedule by about a month, so we're happy about that, and you can see the progress every day, even though they've got some sheeting up to try to protect inside so they can work appropriately. Sorry about that. So it's going well. Of particular interest for us is that we finally have response from National Grid about the pole relocation that needs to happen. That's a key component to the forward progress of the project because until that can be relocated and set, the transformer can't be delivered, and the transformer is required to be able to provide power and so on. Those can have long lead times, so we're very glad to hear about that. And then I would just remind people that budget-wise, a key component to this project was that it was bought out, the materials, steel, and other sorts of things were bought out early in the project, so we shouldn't be affected by price fluctuations, which may be coming in various industries. So in your packet is the change order log and the three-week look ahead and some good pictures, and the committee continues to meet every Wednesday morning to make sure that things stay on track and on budget.
Great. Any questions for the town manager on this? Great, thank you. Moving on.
So moving on to the Academy Building Fountain, I spent some time talking to our facilities coordinator about that, and I understand that the process for the fountain is that every spring it is open for the season after the winter, and it's closed down in the wintertime and winterized. That process involves he and the plumbing inspector opening it, cleaning it, servicing it on that schedule, and calibrating the pump to ensure that the water stays when it comes out, and the fountain stays within the fountain area, not splashing beyond it. They need to make pressure adjustments to how the water comes out, and I understand it's supposed to come out in a spiral fashion, but it doesn't necessarily look exactly as people have expected it to look or it looked when it was first installed. We think that that might require, at some point, either a new pump, which we understand might cost approximately $2,500, or perhaps a new fountain head. We have not gone any further with that now because, as we're starting well into the second half of the fiscal year, our maintenance budget just is requiring us to focus on things that absolutely need to be replaced or fixed, and that's not where this is, even if it's not exactly what people are expecting. And I'd also remind people that there have been times in the past couple of years, I can't tell you exactly when, that the water was turned off in the fountain simply because we had water limitations, and so it made sense to just keep water for other public uses. So that, I can't tell you exactly what happened, but I think that has been a concern that people have had.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Lindy.
So just wanted to make sure, I know you had the meetings with the plumbing inspector and the maintenance person. I'm just wondering, is where the BIA had donated that to the town and has the whole history of it, maybe it would be a good idea to talk to some of those folks because they know the way the water was supposed to be. There's some, I think there's some minor adjustments that need to be made. I don't know about a new pump for that kind of cost.
Sure.
Leave it to the professionals to determine that, but just perhaps communication.
Sure, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Anybody else have any questions on this one? Seeing none, moving on.
Public meetings and either ELS, ESL services or for services for people who may need, have hearing impairment or whatever, just wanted to bring everyone up to date. We have had a request to have hybrid meetings. The state's, I can't remember the name of the legislation that the governor has just reintroduced, Public Empowerment Act, Public Engagement, something like that, would enable the temporary allowance of meetings to be hybrid or remote or to be permanent, and so being able to have different types of meetings rather than only in person. And we have had one board want to have hybrid meetings in, probably in this room. Those, we're working on how to achieve that. If we wanted to have a truly hybrid meeting, and in fact, we did have one earlier this evening in room 201A, we can accommodate people both in person and not in the room, but this room is not as easy to accommodate that for. As you know, we have a volunteer from BTV assisting us to work the cameras and some of the technology in the back room, and we use that to be able to stream it then to YouTube. In order to make that happen, we would need a couple of things. Some technology changes to allow Zoom to happen while we're here, somebody, either a board member, like, sitting at the table, or perhaps a staff person being able to run a Zoom room so that you can manage the people both wanting to speak and participate in the room as well as remotely. And depending on the technology that we could arrive at, we possibly would still need BTV volunteers, and that's something we'd have to make sure we could have dependently organized so that the committee can continue to have a meeting that they've planned. So I just wanted you to all know that we're working on that and trying to figure out how we can make that happen so that boards, as they want to come back to be in person but have a hybrid option, would be able to do it. So don't have any specifics for you on that yet. As far as accommodation for folks, I would remind you that the law does require, if someone lets us know 48 hours in advance that they need accommodation, we have an obligation to provide it, and we can call on state resources to do that. Probably would cost, if they come out from the state, from Boston, probably about $500 for a meeting. We haven't had that request, so we have not made arrangements for that. In terms of English language services, it certainly would be helpful if we knew people wanted to come to a meeting and needed a particular accommodation for a particular language. I think it's possible to arrange that, but again, we haven't had this request in advance, so it's hard to plan. In terms of equipment to buy, for those other reasons, we haven't looked into it yet. It does not say that we couldn't in the future.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mr. Lindy?
So I know from my experience that the equipment that is in there is a little older, and there is other equipment. I believe, I thought, we put forward some budget monies earlier in the year to buy some equipment or have BTV buy some equipment. Some of the, some of the equipment doesn't require a person to do it. It's better with a person to do it, but there are services that would allow for it. And when you're talking the accommodations, too, I know that not too many places do, but I know Massasoit Board of Trustees, the Stoughton Select Board, they have not language services for accommodation. they have not language services for accommodations, but just a little device that's like, it's like a headset and a little transmitter that people that can't hear properly can use that. And I did inquire with Stoughton. I haven't gotten the information back, but I will, and I'll talk to you directly.
We bought an encoder. That was the equipment that you approved, as well as some replacement microphones. The encoder enables us to be able to transmit to YouTube and get that video out. That's really the key thing that that does.
And there's a switcher, the special effects generator that switches the picture from, you know, like a shot of Kevin or a wide shot or whatever for the three cameras. It's become more automated, and it's been developed since COVID with Zoom and everything like that. So, I'll try to see. I know Jeff is aware of that stuff and...
We had a great meeting with himself and our IT director to talk through what would be needed, and they're all working on it.
Okay.
So, we don't have a date where we could launch it yet, but it's coming.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that, councilors? Seeing none. Last thing up, Perkins Development Mitigation.
So, checked in with the CED Department about this. The planning, their planning board decision on this development included up to $200,000 in mitigation for, quote, "onsite or offsite improvements consistent with a public purpose and complementary to the goals of the Vision to Reality Initiative." Those things could include crosswalk equipment, sidewalks, paving of public or MBTA parking lots or examples of what it could be spent on. It has not started yet because one of the key components to this project getting going is removing the foundry, and that hasn't happened, so I don't have a date for you yet. But that was what was required and the kinds of things it could be spent on.
Great. Any questions on that for Town Manager? Yeah, Mr. Murphy.
I don't know if you can answer this, but you said it was either onsite or offsite?
It could be on or off, so associated with that project. So, I think it has to be somewhat in the vicinity of the projects I would interpret it.
And is that the planning board that decides or approves that?
Yes.
Use of that $200,000?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Manager for a future meeting? Ms. Lindy.
So, Dr. Hunt mentioned this in his comments earlier. You know, thinking about the Summer Street Park, which is downtown in my district. I know that grant has certain deadlines for it. Do you, this can be for a future meeting, but I just want to find out if we think we can meet the deadlines and get it done so we don't lose access to that money.
Yep. It's on my list.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other requests from any councilors? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Moving forward, we do not have any other discussions planned. Committee reports. Anyone have a committee report that they'd like to share? Ms. Lindy.
So, tonight, we did have a hybrid Budget and Finance and Finance Committee meeting, which worked out really well. Both committees were at quorum, and we were able to take action on a whole bunch of items that will be up next in legislative, legislation for action.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Yeah. Give an update on the ad hoc search committee for the Town Manager. The committee held interviews on February 8th. It was an all-day affair, and we concluded that round of the interview process and will put forth four individuals to the entire Town Council at a future meeting date where interviews will be held in public. And so, more information to come on that. But there are four individuals that we have put forth as a committee.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other subcommittees? Seeing none. Thank you for those reports. We will move forward with legislation for action. Okay. First one up, we have Order OFY 25-032, Acceptance of Nonrecurring Revenue to Capital, Department of Corrections. I'll just ask Town Manager for a brief review of this.
So, this is what we otherwise refer to as prison mitigation funds. It's money that is included in the state budget, hopefully every year, that is dedicated to communities that have state prison facilities in the community. The amount for Bridgewater for this year is $249,037.82, and it is our practice to put it into our capital stabilization fund for future capital needs.
Thank you. What did Budget and Finance and Finance decide?
Budget and Finance voted three to nothing, and Finance voted five to nothing.
Thank you very much.
I'll move that.
Yeah. There we go. And we have a motion to move this forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
I miss Strickles. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moves forward. Thank you. Next up, Order OFY 25-037, Acceptance of a Donation from the Oliari Charitable Foundation. Again, I'll get a brief description from the Town Manager.
Their donation is for $45,000, and they have asked that those funds be shared equally, so $15,000 each to the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Library, and those funds to be used at the sole discretion of those department heads for whatever they deem important.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy, where was the disposition of the finance?
Budget and Finance voted three to nothing to refer to council, and also Finance Committee voted five to nothing.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Lindy. Mr. Chase on a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Allenberg.
Yes. Mr. Lindy, I know that you're with the Library, and there was going to be some question about whether we would continue within our sales program. Do you know, will the $15,000 be sufficient to maintain that program?
No, that's additional funding. We have to budget in the, in the town budget to meet state aid requirements, a certain amount of money dedicated to the Library budget. This is additional money that I don't believe is restricted. It's not restricted. It's whatever the Library Director and the Board of Trustees want to utilize.
So, it could be assigned to that if necessary?
If they felt necessary, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Allenberg. Any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Order OFY 25-038, Acceptance of a Grant, Firefighter Safety Grant Equipment Program. Ms. Robinson, a brief description if you would.
This is a grant that the state puts out every year to all fire departments. It's distributed by population size, and the amount for Bridgewater this next year, this year is $10,981.59. The purpose of the grant is for safety equipment. And as you can see at the bottom of the order, the plan is to use it for combustible gas detector, an HCN detector, hand tools, a fan, and a handheld thermal imager.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lindy.
Budget and Finance voted three to nothing to refer to the council, and Finance voted five to nothing to refer to the council tonight, and I'll move that this be approved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Allenberg with a second. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Order OFY 25-039, Adoption of a Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Again, I refer this to Ms. Robinson for a brief description.
So, as the town does every year, we are put forth our capital plan for the next five years. And so, this is for FY 25 through FY 30. And it identifies by department, by funding source, the needs of the community over that period. And I would very much say that this is, like most communities, it's a plan. The first year is funded through various sources, and will be acting on general fund items in a later order tonight. And overall, for the five years, the total is just under $102 million. So, I think these are excellent plans that help us understand what needs to be happening for the future and gives us the opportunity to have those discussions at upcoming meetings about how we're going to achieve that.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. Lindy.
So, Budget and Finance voted three to zero to send it to the council, and so did the Finance Committee. It was a very comprehensive, well-developed plan, very well explained to both of the bodies.
Excellent. So, are we motion to approve?
Second.
And Ms. Strickles with a second. Any further discussion on it?
Yes.
Ms. Allenberg.
Yes. There was discussion that alternative sources of funding need to be secured if we're going to be able to balance the budget, and things are looking pretty slim right now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. Eight to zero. Thank you. Next up, Order OFY 25-040, General Fund Capital Transfer Order. Again, a brief description from the Town Manager, please.
So, following up on the previous order, this is, this order is for $1,138,500 for FY 25 expenditures from the general fund for various town uses. As you know, the town, the council voted in December, I believe, for, to fund what we fund for Bridgewater portion of the school district. This is the town side. It includes technology, various building improvements, vehicles, and machinery, and equipment and vehicles mostly focused on police and fire rolling stock.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lindy.
Budget and Finance voted three to zero to refer, recommend to the council, and so did the Finance Committee, five to zero.
Thank you. With a motion.
And I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Strickles. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Order OFY 25-041, Capital Transfer Order from the Water Enterprise Funds. Again, I'll ask for a brief description from the Town Manager.
So, this order is specifically for funds from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. It totals $662,640. All but $25,000 is for water and for four different purposes. Some additional costs for a water tower repair project, a dump truck, a part of a water rate study. But probably most importantly is funding to do the survey work and design work to connect what we call Wells 10A and 10B, or the Plymouth Street Wells, with the High Street Plant. These are the wells that we depend on for water, but because of higher iron and manganese, create brown water, which, you know, is certainly not pleasant if your home is hooked near those. So, this is the early work to be able to then take advantage of a low-interest loan through the state to actually do the capital work. So, we need to get the design going so we can utilize those funds. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we want to update our water and sewer rates. So, having a rate study to look at what we have expended, what we're planning to do so that we can make sure that our rates, that we're charging our users, are fair and covering our costs.
Thank you for that. Ms. Lindy.
Budget and Finance voted to recommend to the council, three to zero, and Finance Committee voted five to zero. And I will move that recommendation.
Yes. Hold up. I have a motion. Do I have a second for discussion?
Second.
Ms. Strickles. Thank you. Ms. Allenberg.
Yes. I just wanted to know if the water that the college uses will be accounted for in this study, and hopefully, it will reflect pilot money coming back to the town for that portion of our water used that way. But I don't know what is planned.
Well, the rate study is going to look at all water users, whether they're from the college or private homeowners. It's what we need to charge all of the users in order to be able to recover the funds we need to operate both systems.
Do we charge the college now?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know how much they pay?
Not off the top of my head. I'd have to check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just had a question on the water rate study in sewer. Seems almost criminal to charge taxpayers $25,000 to do a study on raising their rates, but I understand that's how government works. But could you clarify, do we know the company that's going to do these studies?
No. We're in the process of putting that out, procuring that right now. So, we've reached out to various firms who do this specialized work, and the cost will be paid through the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds, not by the general taxpayer.
And will that go towards any future improvements, or is that just the study?
Exactly. We need to plan. As you know, we have a lot of, we have got this particular project and a number others going in water, and then the upgrades to the treatment plant in sewer. And so, we want to, need to project out what we need to be doing in order to charge the appropriate, but not more than we need rates to cover those costs.
Very good. Anything else? Any other councilors? Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Just want to thank the Finance Committee for meeting with us. It was a very productive joint meeting.
Good to get all that business done. So, thank you to Finance Committee as well. And finally, in this grouping, we have Petition P-2025-019, Town Election Warrant for April 26, 2025. Basic... I did? Nope.
But that's...
Nope. I'm right up here.
It's not on my agenda. Did it get updated?
Yeah. I don't know what condition you got, but it's on mine.
It's the next one on mine, too.
It's on the new business. I don't have it on my agenda.
He wasn't printed. Do you need the petition? Would you? No. I have it. I've got it in my packet. I mean, it's in...
I have it to A through F. I don't have a G.
Do you have it listed under new business instead?
I don't have it at all.
Must have been updated. Okay.
It's on the online one.
Either way, we're at Petition P-2025-019, Town Election Warrant. A quick description from Ms. Robinson.
So, every year in April, the town has its annual election. This is the warrant that the town clerk needs to have approved in order to be able to post. These are all the, these positions that are open, you know, seats are open for various committees.
Thank you very much. Yep. This basically just lists everything that will be listed on the town warrant coming up in April. Do I have a motion for approval? Mr. Chase. Second by Ms. Loretty. Any further discussion on the warrant? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. That concludes legislation for action. We do not have any old business, but we have some new business to address. Let us see. First thing up, Order OFY 25-042, Transfer Order, CPC Purchase and Restoration of Samuel Edson's Coroner's Book. Again, I'll ask Ms. Robinson for a brief description on this.
Can I ask Mr. Hunt to handle this one?
Sure. We'll defer to Dr. Hunt. Please come on up and give us a little feedback on this.
Off the top of my head, this is a almost 300-year-old book that we came into possession of. We haven't paid for it, so part of the request is money to purchase that book. It's a book that has, back in 1723, the King authorized certain things. It's got all of that documentation in there. That's not what we're trying to, we're going to preserve that, but we're not trying to do anything more than preserve that part of the book. The last half of the book has a number of handwritten pages of his duties as a coroner here in Bridgewater. It includes such things as several Native American investigations of death, and it's part of the culture of Bridgewater. It also is handmade paper. That's in some pretty serious need of restoration and recovery. So, the CPC voted to, and we have a proposal, I'm not sure it was in the packet, from any DCC, the premier group that restores books, that kind of thing. They have that book in their possession right now. They did an assessment of it, and the assessment cost is on the order of $6,000, something like that. We can, as an incidental factor in this book, actually digitize the handwritten parts and any pages that have annotations in it. So, that's what the funding's for. It's a lot of money. We appreciate that. It's $13,000 that we're requesting, recommending that you appropriate the funds from the Bridgewater Community Preservation Historic Reserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. So, looking for a motion to send this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So, move.
Mr. Lindy. Mr. Chase on a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none. All those in favor, sending to Budget and Finance and Finance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hunt, again, for that description. Next up, we have Order OFY 25-043, CPC Additional Funds for the Restoration of the Parthenon Freeze. I'll refer this to the town manager, or?
This one I can do.
Her designee.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Now, this one is, we have, as you know, the freezes have been restored, they are actually stored currently over in the memorial building in the basement. But in order to hang them appropriately in the academy building, the work, the work needs to be done to the walls to make sure that the appropriate strengthening is in place to be able to hang them, this is, they're, they're not the type where you just put in a little picture hanger and call it a day. So, we have asked the CPC to recommend $4,600, we've received quotes from vendor to be able to do this work, and want to move forward with it if you will approve so.
Thank you very much on that, I'm looking for a motion to send to Budget and Finance, Finance Committees.
So moved.
Ms. Lindy, seconded by Ms. Strickles, any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have Order OFY 25-044, Contract Ratification for the Town Manager. This is for our acting town manager to fill the gap between the end of her second 90-day term and the time at which we hire a new full-time town manager, the details of which we'll be going over in executive session later tonight, but we're looking to just keep this at a council level, and we'll work to act on it at our next meeting. Do I have a motion to keep it at the council level?
So moved.
And Ms. Strickles, seconded by Mr. Chase, any further comments on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have Resolution RFY 25-006, Asking the Town Manager to Explore Applying for the Emerging Contaminants in Small or Disadvantaged Communities Grant as Part of a Comprehensive Strategy to Fund PFAS Remediation. This was brought forward by Councilor Ready, so I'll turn it over to you, sir, for a description.
Sure, so I'll make this brief, water quality is something that's important to all of us, particularly myself, there is a grant, the state set aside, I think, $38 million a couple of years ago, of which $17 million of that has already been allocated, and grant applications are still open and available, so I'd like to encourage the town to apply for that grant as part of a larger strategy to investigate and obviously remediate the, the PFAS contaminants in the water. And just for perspective, surrounding communities such as Plymouth, Carver, Rainham, Taunton, Lakeville have already received these funds. Carver has received a grant in the amount of $1.3 million. Pepperell, who's not too close to us, but they've received a $5 million grant, so I don't know how much we're eligible for, but we could certainly use some of the funds, and I would love to see us apply for that, again, as a part of a larger remediation plan.
Thank you, Ms. Loretty, excellent. Again, we're looking to keep this at a council level, so I have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Ms. Allenberg, seconded by Ms. Strickles, any further discussion on this resolution? Oh, Ms. Strickles.
I would just like to thank Councilor Ready for doing the legwork on this and bringing something to our attention, that we weren't aware that there were that many funds that were potentially at our disposal, so thank you for doing this.
I echo those sentiments, thank you, Ms. Loretty. So, all those in favor, keeping it at council level, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next up, let's see, next up, we have Resolution RFY 25-007, A Resolution Affirming Bridgewater as a Welcoming Community for All. This was brought forward by Councillors Murphy, Chase, and Strickles. I'll certainly turn over to Mr. Murphy first for reintroduction and discussion.
I don't have, I think I addressed it at the beginning of the meeting, I don't have anything further.
Okay, did Councillor Chase or Strickles like to make any comments?
I'm very supportive of this, I appreciate the fact that Counselor Murphy had sought further cosponsorship of the measure. Speaking for myself, I was certainly very pleased and proud to join him in that endeavor, and as well, Counselor Strickles. I think that your comments earlier in the evening, Counselor Murphy helped to, I certainly hope, alleviate concerns of some folks with respect to matters that had been bandied about in online media and perhaps elsewhere. I know that I did have an opportunity to speak with a resident today, I returned a call to a resident about this very issue, and I was very happy to, in the course of just about two minutes, walk her through logging into the town website, finding the agenda for tonight's meeting, and showing her exactly what the resolution said so that she could read it herself on her own laptop. I know that we have comments with respect to transparency over council matters, and I would just like to say that this particular evening's agenda, which is not unusual, totaled 93 pages in length, and it's not possible for the town to put that content on a Facebook page on a timely basis for delivery to the community. We put it on our town website where it belongs, it's very accessible, and most residents in town have no difficulty whatsoever finding in advance of our meetings the schedule, the agenda for an upcoming meeting, which are posted on Friday, generally by about noon on Friday, before a Tuesday evening meeting. So, I just wanted to make that comment, but I, again, appreciate the opportunity to help to sponsor this, and I thank my fellow councillors for their support.
Ms. Strickles, any further comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, so I am approaching this from a little bit of a different perspective. Today was a pretty challenging day for me as a councillor, for a lot of reasons, and one of them has been referenced, it was referenced during Citizens' Open Forum, and a Twitter post about this very resolution that named me personally, and people in town that scrolled on by. A councillor that shows up here to defend her district every single meeting, no one came to my defense. I can't always come to my defense in public spaces, we have rules against that. So, I prepared this, and this is what I wanted to share with all of you. In 1957, my grandparents built their home here in Bridgewater, a community that would sell land to a black couple prior to the height of the civil rights movement, before my grandparents had the right to vote. They moved here before they had the right to vote in this country, and went on to not only be business owners in the community, but pillars of our community that many of you knew, both in politics and philanthropic work. It wasn't always easy, I heard the stories of inequality and racism from my grandfather growing up, but he always persisted forward, knowing what he was doing was right, because every voice and every person that he loved in this town mattered and was of value to not only him, but to others. That was the beauty of America, he would teach every single one of his grandchildren. I bring this up because their love of this town has rubbed off on me, that's why I'm sitting here, and I don't think in 2025 he would have ever expected racial tropes to fall at his granddaughter's doorstep simply because she was trying to do the right thing. When I was approached about this resolution, I felt it was an appropriate sentiment given our current climate we live in today. I really hoped we, as a community, could get back to leading with love and not fear or hate. We can't accomplish our greatest challenges without all of us coming to the table as one unifying unit. We owe it to all of the people in our community to let them know that they are seen, valued, and heard. Whether you yourself have experienced issues with diversity or discrimination, should not discount the experiences of your neighbors, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickles. Right, so again, we're looking to keep this at the council level, so I'll ask for that motion in a second for further discussion. Ms. Strickles, seconded by Mr. Chase, any further discussion?
Yeah, can I?
Go ahead.
I would like to make an amendment before it's posted, if possible. I'd like to strike the language for clarification that reads, "Regardless of Changes in Federal Policies or Political Rhetoric." My proposal, again, is to strike that language.
Do I have a second on that? Seconded by Ms. Strickles, further discussion on the, on the edits?
Paragraph three.
That's, yeah, the first.
Regardless of federal.
No, 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 this one here.
No. Question.
Ms. Lindy, go ahead.
To the town council. The way this is worded, does this in any way put us at odds with any federal laws?
No.
Because all.
Order, please, hold, hold, hello, this is, this is not a time for the public discuss things.
No, no, it doesn't, it's a, it's your right as a board to exercise the First Amendment, which is what this is. A resolution is a statement by your body exercising your First Amendment right, which I believe is important to everyone. So, no, it does not put you in violation of any law.
Just want that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins, any other council comments or questions? Mr. Loretty?
When I walked into this building today, I also read the proclamation by the front door, three, three people in this room signed that proclamation, Mr. Perry, sorry, Dr. Perry, being, being one of them. It declared Bridgewater a community of civility, and I believe that we all live in that community as it stated. Members of the community came up tonight and recognized the fact that they live in an inclusive and welcoming community. So, I'm not sure if this resolution is needed to reiterate something which is already thriving here in Bridgewater.
All right, thank you.
Well, while I certainly appreciate the spirit of which this was brought up, Massachusetts' law already protects against discrimination in employment, housing, and public spaces, and this resolution doesn't do anything new or adding anything specific that's actionable towards improving the lives of our citizens here. So, while, while the sentiment is, is great, and any reasonable person could get behind this kind of language, I don't see a problem that's being solved, I see a solution to something where there isn't an existing problem. Last thing, wrapping this up, I do think because it is so broad and it doesn't list anything specific, any specific action, that it does open this up to broad and vague interpretations of, of what this means, and we could be held accountable to what this does and, and does not say, and I don't want to see us be potentially exposed, you know, to that. I think as leaders, we need to have very specific objectives and very specific ways of achieving those objectives to improve the lives of our citizens. And again, while the sentiment here is, is one that is positive, it doesn't address anything specific, and with that, I personally would like to just table this, just because it does, as Paul, as Mr. Murphy mentioned, there would be some amendments that should be made here, I think that it would need to be reworked, and so I would move to, to table this for tonight.
Go to my amendment first, sir.
Well, again, motion.
Yeah, there's a pending motion to amend, which takes precedence.
Men first, so take, take that first.
So, you have to vote the motion to amend, and then the next one would be the motion to table.
All right, thank you. Ms. Allenberg, you had a comment?
Yes, I have a comment as to Mr. Murphy's amendment, actually.
What's that again, I'm sorry?
I have a comment as to the amendment that Mr. Murphy is offering right now.
We can have a discussion on the amendment, that's what we're discussing.
Right. So, my thing is that taking out this regardless of federal policies or political climates, okay, is trying to be a subterfuge. In fact, I see this entire article as a subterfuge for DEI and Sanctuary City, which it's claimed it's not, okay, but we don't know, and the vague language could easily be interpreted that we have endorsed DEI and Sanctuary City. Now, why does this concern me? Because of federal funding. We're talking major amounts of federal funds through grants or through other allocations. We have a water problem in our town that needs lots and lots of funding, our roads are deplorable, so we need a lot of funding, and I think we would be extremely foolish to endorse this article and cut off our nose to spite our face for federal funding.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg, any other, Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President, I feel that Bridgewater town is already accepting, kind, and has a community-minded set towards everyone. I know it's not the intent of my fellow councils, but when I read the resolution, I was kind of offended, because we residents don't need a program nor a resolution to tell us how we should treat one another. We've been doing it way before anyone has ever heard of DI, and no matter who is or was president, I am not the only resident that feels this way. I'm also concerned over the political references in this resolution, such as political climates that may seek to divide communities and political rhetoric. Are we not a bipartisan council? Therefore, I cannot support this because we don't need a resolution to affirm that Bridgewater is a welcoming community, because we already know we are. Thank you.
Here, here.
Now, the question through you to the town attorney, does the wording of this preclude us from obtaining federal funding?
I have no idea, how can I answer that?
I, I.
If you ask me a legal question, I can give you a legal answer.
Well.
Are you asking me if something that is said in a resolution of a town could influence a random senator, congress member from voting funding for certain states, which then could trickle down? I mean, that question is, is impossible to answer.
I'm just trying to get a handle on it, because right now Massachusetts is not in a good climate for receiving federal funding. We have Congress, the White House, and the Senate all controlled by one party, and basically, if you remember when Massachusetts voted against Richard Nixon in 1972, we did not get too much federal funding at all. So, I'm concerned about it, I don't like the wording, regardless of changes in federal policies or political rhetoric as well, or anything that seeks to divide communities. We just sat through the flag ordinance, and all, not the ordinance, the resolution, the ordinance, the whole discussion about that. I, I'm very torn, because I have been very supportive of BCCR and everything they've done, I think we already have the resolution hanging downstairs.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Any further comments from any other councillors? All right, so we do have the amendment first to take on up, so we had a.
To clarify what your amendment you're voting on, is it?
Striking regardless of changes.
But I see that in multiple paragraphs, I think.
Was it in multiple paragraphs?
Yeah.
I believe I. Can we?
Yes, let's take a five-minute recess, please, thank you. A minimum, please, it's just, you know, distracting, as a council, we're trying to do business, there'll be time for comments at the end of the meeting, if you'd like to stay at the end and make comments, please, okay? So, getting back to the resolution, we had a, a motion for an amendment, I think we have to reamend to include another line, if you want to add that, Mr. Murphy?
Clarify which line?
Yes, please.
So, to clarify, striking the line that says, "Regardless of Federal Policy or Political Climates," that makes, may seek to divide communities.
In the third paragraph.
Asking to strike that in the third paragraph. I'm also asking to strike the language that says, "Regardless of Changes in Federal Policies or Political Rhetoric."
In the sixth paragraph.
Correct.
Okay, that's the entirety of the amendment, and do I get a second again on that amendment? By Ms. Strickles, thank you.
So, all we're voting on is to reduce those, to eliminate those two sentences.
That's the first vote that we're taking, yes. So, all those in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
I hear one, that motion carries, those amendments are made.
Now, there's also a pending motion to table.
Right, we have a motion to table, do I have a second motion, second on that motion?
Second.
By Ms. Allenberg, further discussion on tabling at this point in time, any other further comments?
Can I, can I read something?
Go right ahead, Ms. Lindy.
Okay, I went downstairs and I took a picture of the resolution that's hanging on the wall, it's pretty big, I thought I could take it off the wall and bring it up here, but I can't, okay? It was, it was put forward by the Bridgewater Citizens for Civility and Respect, the predecessor name to the current organization, and it says, "Whereas Bridgewater, established in 1656, is a town with a diverse population of 27,000 people that has enjoyed a strong tradition of." of 27,000 people that has enjoyed a strong tradition of civil rights and which hate speech is not tolerated, whereas the citizens of Bridgewater have long upheld a tradition of respect that guarantees civil rights for all, whereas incidents of hate speech and verbal assaults directed at individuals because of their appearance or clothing choices which reflect particular cultures is in direct opposition with the tradition and values of this town, whereas the town of Bridgewater respects the rights of all persons in our town to live without fear of verbal or physical assaults and exercise freedom of cultural expression through choices of attire, religious practice, and speech. Be it therefore resolved that the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, is declared a community of civility where intolerant speech and behavior are unacceptable, thus ensuring that our town remains a respectful place to live, work, attend school, visit, and conduct business. This was done a few years back. I wasn't on the council. I think Kevin is the only, Dr. Perry is the only one that was on the council. I personally think, in talking to one of my fellow councils, this needs to be updated. Unfortunately, I don't think this is the solution to updating it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Loretty. Any further discussion on tabling? Ms. McGrath?
Could you just explain tabling again?
I'll refer to Mr. Rollins to describe that to you.
It essentially kills it. So, it doesn't come back before you. It doesn't get referred out. It's essentially gone. Prior to having a final vote where you vote it down, this is the process for essentially getting rid of something.
All right, thank you.
So, if we table it now, again, as he said, it kills it. If we do not table it now, if still we're not voting on this this evening, we can bring this back, further edits at our next meeting, and vote finally on it either way at our next meeting.
So, yes, it's tabled, and no, it's not.
Right. If you, if we take a vote on tabling, a yes vote is to table it, and a no vote is to not table it. Thank you. Any further discussions?
I'd just like to implore people to consider some kind of a resolution that doesn't kill it. I think we should work on it. I think it's...
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, again, the way this is written, again, if it were to be tabled, this particular resolution...
Is dead.
Is dead, but a new resolution could be brought forth, rewritten a different way if necessary. I think we ran into that with...
The flag.
The flag resolutions and some similar resolutions that have been written before. Ms. Loretty?
Per your suggestion, Mr. Lindy, perhaps the proclamation downstairs should be amended in place of something like this.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
Well, that one was...
You amend it.
I don't know if we can amend a proclamation that was on the past. You know, I don't think that can be, a new proclamation would have to be...
Yeah, you would just do a new resolution. Yeah, that proclamation's already on a wall somewhere.
Yeah, I don't think we can change that as is.
And when you do a resolution just for educational purposes, the resolutions are the statement of this particular body. You're not able to change a resolution of a prior board because they're speaking for themselves. Every board is different.
Right.
So, you would have to just formalize a new resolution, bring it back before the board. That's a proper process.
Yep.
Go ahead, Ms. McGrath.
If you were to just say if we could amend the proclamation, what would you amend in it?
Some of the language here? I can't amend it. I understand what...
No, I know, but I was just curious what you think is missing.
There is some language in here that I would certainly be in favor of.
No, I was just wondering if there was a specific thing that you would add.
On at this moment, and I'm not on that committee.
It's just...
I don't have an answer for you right now.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Ellenberg.
And this is just a comment. And I would say, as a person of faith, I think we, our actions speak louder than our words, and I think if we treat people with fairness and honesty, all will be well. So, that's why I will be voting yes to put this aside. If a new resolution comes up in the future, so be it.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Any further discussion? All right then. So, I will go forward and ask for a vote to table. I think we'll do this with a roll call vote.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Excuse me. Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Strickles?
No.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Three in favor, six opposed, no, five opposed.
Five opposed. So, motion to table is defeated. We will take our vote now just to retain this at a council level, and we'll bring this back up at our next meeting. Where again, further edits, further changes can be made if necessary. We had originally a motion and a second on that. All those in favor of keeping it at a council level, please signify by saying...
Can we do a roll call vote? Can I request a roll call?
You didn't do the motion for retaining it at council level.
I did not. Okay, so do I have a motion to keep it at the council level? Ms. Strickles, second by Mr. Chase. By then, all right, that's fine. We'll do a roll call vote to keep it at a council level.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
All right, so we'll keep this at a council level. We'll go over it again at our next meeting, and again, open to further discussion and edits at that time. Moving on to Propose Ordinance DFY25-017, Proposed Amendment to Part II Administrative Code, Chapter 60, Article 1, Section 1, Regarding Elections. And again, this is a similar thing that we just talked about. A prior one on elections was tabled, but a new one was brought forward by Ms. Loretty. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Loretty for your ordinance.
This one's pretty simple. This is in response to the previous ordinance which was tabled. This is language regarding election hours. It just makes things very simple. It says for all elections, the polls shall be open at 7:00 a.m. and shall remain open until 8:00 p.m. This keeps things very straightforward, simple, not confusing at all. The current code, just for folks, just so that folks know, in addition to that language, it says at special town elections, the polls may be opened no earlier than 7:00 a.m., no later than 12:00 noon, and may remain open no later than 8:00 in the evening. Technically, an election could begin at noon and end at 1:00 p.m. if you look at this language. So, all that this does is strike that, and it makes it very straightforward. 7:00 a.m., 8:00 p.m., and that's it.
Okay, Ms. Loretty, thank you. Again, we're looking to refer this to rules and procedures. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
And a second, Mr. Chase. Any discussion on it? Any comments? Nope. All right. I will then ask for a vote to send to rules and procedures. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And then lastly, Order OFY25-045, Acceptance of Donation, Discovery Channels, Expedition X Circle, The Globe Production. Again, I'll ask for a description on this from Ms. Robinson.
So, we were contacted by this entity looking to film a show that they're doing on the Bridgewater Triangle. And so, as they wanted to use public property and needed support of our park steward at one of the locations, we asked them for a donation, which they have so made, so are asking you to accept it.
I see. It looks like it's for $800. I will ask for a motion to send this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Second, Mr. Chase. Ellenberg, any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor sending to Budget and Finance Committees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that concludes our new business for this evening. We will move to citizens' comments. And again, I will say that due to Massachusetts open meeting a lot of requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate responses to questions, concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. If anyone would like to come up and speak, please do so. Name and address, please, in three minutes.
Hi, Lorraine Powers, 51 Sunrise Drive. And obviously, we've just heard comments from some counselors and other people in the audience that they feel this resolution is not necessary because Bridgewater has always been a kind, welcoming town. And clearly, after what Counselor Strickles has just relayed to us that was documented, I don't get it, but you certainly cannot say that there is no reason or no necessity for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak, please?
I don't know. This is the elephant in the room or not?
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, yes, sure. My name is John Haley, 5 Jaclemoy. And I don't know if this is the elephant in the room...
You gotta go to the microphone.
I don't know if it's the elephant in the room or not, but also this document also does say immigration status, and this is highly scrutinized right now, especially on Twitter and other places where, you know, Worcester just had their, you know, their declaration of another type of sanctuaries. So, I think we're just putting ourselves, again, at risk for federal things. I mean, my kids go to school. I don't want to have to pay for that school out of pocket because I won't be able to live here. So, big thing, so that fear comes. So, I know there's a lot of fear from other people about the other way, the way this is going with other people, right? The way, the way... No, I'm talking, speaking to you guys, too, because it's very important that everybody hears this because on both sides, you both need to hear it because it's important that everyone hears it because it's, it is. I get that this is so important. I love everyone. That's the trouble. I guess everyone that came out here loves everyone, right? That's why you're here. You're spending the time because we do care. We really, really do. But we're putting ourselves at big and like dire risk. The fact that this is on Twitter and the fact that it's going viral, it puts us at dire risk for funding. Speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please, come on up.
Sean Kennedy, 47 Sum Street. First, I'd urge you to vote no on the resolution. I disagree with it. I think the intent of the resolution is vague. It's full of virtue signaling and appears to inject contentious national politics into our local community, and I disagree with that. The language also weaponizes the empathy of well-intended council members, pushing them to vote in favor or be seen as against the highlighted groups in the resolution. I disagree with that as well. It puts you in a tough position. I'd like to add that for a resolution on inclusion, there's no mention of people with disabilities. People like my daughter, who is physically and mentally disabled, whose inclusion requires real action, not virtue signaling resolutions from town council. So, to me, this exposes what the real intent is, and it's to highlight special section of the community and project them as having needs above everyone else. I disagree with that. So, even if you were to include the disabilities, I'd still be against the resolution. Finally, free speech is also speech we all disagree with. Otherwise, it's not truly free speech. So, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Hi, Mary Lee Hunt. I want to say something that's kind of specifically for Counselor Strickles, but maybe for all of you. Thirty-nine years ago, when we meant to move to Bridgewater, we were coming from Rhode Island. We knew nothing about where we were going to be in Massachusetts. My husband's working in Dexbury. We drew a circle about how, couldn't be a circle because part of it was ocean, but the part on land to see where we could live. And then we started trying to find a community. And one of our specific goals, the thing I said to the person who was looking for housing for us, a place for us to buy, I said we need someplace that accepts everybody, someplace where everyone is valued. We don't want to move to a community where some people are shunned and not valued. Find us a place like that. Well, he thought I was crazy, and he said he couldn't go knocking on doors of people who were going to live next to me. I said, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the full community. Eventually, he called and he told me, he said, I think I found a town for you. And he told me about two people in the town. One, he said, was the deputy chief of police, and the other one was the county commissioner. And he said, these people are black people. Is that what you're looking for? And I said, well, I don't know that that specifically is what I'm looking for, but maybe this points me to a community where people are accepted. We moved here because of Counselor Strickles' grandfather, and George Glurley, who was the deputy chief of police back in that time, became the chief of police. That isn't the full definition of a community, but it was enough to get us here, and it's enough to have us kept fighting for that kind of people in a town named Bridgewater and everywhere else. So, thank you, Counselor Strickles, and thank your family for letting us come here.
Thank you, Mary Lee. Anybody else want to come up and speak? Ray?
Ray, Jim, and two quick things. One, the proclamation downstairs came about because of a hate incident. It didn't come about simply because a few people sat down to come up with it. There was a specific hate instrument example at the post office that prompted that resolution. Secondly, however you vote on this, whether it's change or whatever, however you vote, I hope you do not vote on the basis of fear. I hope you vote on the basis which you think is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Sam Baumgart, 60 Short Street. I'm not sure where to begin, but I'd like to start by asking the question of who is creating all this fear? It's coming from the federal government right now, the White House. So, we're afraid of being held hostage about federal funds. That's really bad. We have fear that this country is being made to feel unwelcome. And I say statements are important. They have been important to students at Bridgewater Rainham, at Bridgewater State University, among our townspeople, when we stand up for welcoming open community. If we are such a welcoming community, what is the harm in bringing another statement forward? Is there anything wrong with that? We're reaffirming what we already are. That's okay. What's wrong with that? I believe some of the concerns that were raised are sort of, you know, worried about DEI. You know, I'll bet the leader in the White House doesn't even know what it means. Couldn't explain it. I'm not sure you all could either. It's pretty complex. And I ask you to look at our own university in town, which has been a leader in social justice, in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and has a wonderful community created over many years. And those efforts are being all wiped out in other places. I hope Bridgewater State will hold the line, and I hope they'll hold the line if they're threatened with losing federal funding as well. I think we need to stand up for being a welcoming community, and another statement does that without any harm. So, I hope you'll go forward with this, even if you need to tweak the language. What are you afraid of? Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Come on up, John?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. John Donahue, 261 South Street. I want to thank Councilman Paul Murphy and Councilman Mark Lindy. They had an open session, I believe it was three weeks ago, four weeks ago, maybe. Anyone in town, any resident, was welcome to come and talk about things that are important to them in town, and I took full advantage of that, and I'm very happy I came. I found it very useful that I won. I think counselors, Councilman Murphy and Lindy are very open to what the people in this town, the residents in this town, is important to them, and I can't thank them enough for the time they gave. And any of my fellow residents that are out there listening tonight, I would encourage them the next time something like that is offered by one of the counselors, definitely take advantage of it because it's an amazing opportunity, and I can't thank you enough. As far as the ordinance goes, as Bridgewater being, making Bridgewater a welcoming community, I have to say it, I think that Councilman Loretty probably said it the best. He said, forgive me if I don't get your words exactly right, but to the effect that he supported the sentiment behind it, but we're, I'm just... problem or the classes of the size in Bridgewater. I know a lot of us were at the, the school committee meeting at the BR, and one of the, I believe it was one of the women in the teachers' unit got up and said, "Don't let the, don't let the stories about 28 or 29 students in the class fool you." She said, "It's more like 33." So, you know, that tells me that, one, Bridgewater's not an unwelcoming town. We've got a lot of students that want to be here. They're being welcomed here, but we don't have the resources for what we have now. So I was, again, I was glad to hear Councilman Loretty talk about tapping the, I believe you're talking about a state water issue. And I think those are the issues we really need to focus on. And plus with this mandated MBTA law, that, that our state legislator is asking, forcing us, forcing you, to build these additional units where there's already a water crisis. And there's already a class size problem. I'll wrap it up, Mr. President. There's already a class size problem. I really think these are the things we need to focus on, so I hope we could do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue. Dr. Hunt.
Dr. Hunt, 80 Austin Street. I've had one experience of negativism towards me. I'm a veteran. I volunteered for the draft. I spent two years as a military policeman. I came home, to my home in Colorado, at night in my Class A's. For those of you who have not served, you know that Class A's are your dress uniform. I was doing street duty. I came up to an apartment that had dentists, lots of people in it, and I got called a white honky pig! I wasn't very welcomed in that town, and I see that starting to happen in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Please, come forward.
Brandon Hitchens, 1093 High Street. I just want to address some of the older people in the room here. I think that my generation is extremely welcoming of all people, regardless of our beliefs and regardless of whatever our creeds are, that regardless of what you do believe through love, we'll be able to make this a community that we all enjoy. The one thing that I do notice comparing the statement that's downstairs and what's on the resolution is that the difference is immigration status. And I know that we removed, or there was an amendment to remove that. I just feel like, as a younger person, that there's a lot of resentment against American culture, and I feel like that there's a culture war going on, and I think people are afraid to be American. We all agree that discrimination is wrong. We've been through this, and my generation's tired of having to listen to it. It's okay to be an American. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up and speak?
MJ Spigone, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. Really don't need the microphone, I'm loud enough as it is. So first and foremost, I did want to let folks know that tonight was actually my first chairing opportunity for the finance committee. And in our town's history, I am the first woman appointed to the finance committee's chairmanship, and I'm very proud to hold that title. And I held our first meeting with me in leadership tonight. It was very successful, and there is one thing I would like to note for the general public. My committee is in need of two additional members. I have a membership of nine individuals. I currently have two vacancies. One is an appointment by the town manager, one is an appointment by the town clerk. I would strongly encourage, nay, I implore, at least somebody in this room with their activity in this community, with their desire to have their voice be heard. I would strongly ask that at least one or two of you step up to the plate and join me on the finance committee. I would like to help address the budgetary issues and crises that we may face in the FY26 budget process as it relates to schools, town services, and overall community civic leadership. I would ask at this time that either you reach out to the interim town manager, Ms. Robinson, or you reach out to the town clerk, Ms. Larson, and inquire about taking an interest in being on the finance committee. This body entails a lot of advice and consent to you, Mr. President, and members of the council, and to you, Mr. Lindy, because we did do a joint meeting tonight. I'm very appreciative of us being able to team up in that collaboration. But I would really thoroughly implore members of the community, whether they're behind me or outside of this building, I need people to join the committee. I need people to help us do the important work of government. And that being said, one of the most important things about this town, one of the things I take very dearly to heart, is how welcoming the community has actually been to me as a person in this town. I grew up here in the early 80s. I was born in 83, so I'm about 40 years old, so still youngin'. But this town has been very welcoming to me, and I've owed it a big debt of gratitude. I have spoken numerous times before this council. I've spoken at numerous events in town. The reason why is because I've had the courage to stand up and demonstrate to the community that I am not only brave enough to speak my mind, speak from my heart, speak truth to power, but also implore others to do the same. Whether you need words or documents or statements to say that, I say no. Stand up and show courage and be the person that you know you can be. Stand up and be an upstanding member of your community, and gosh darn it, stand with the fellow members of this community and demonstrate to the world that we are a kind, welcoming place. You don't need paper. You don't need a statement. Just do it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, MJ. Anyone else like to come up and speak, please? Sandy, come on up.
Good evening. Thank you so much for everything that you do. I can see that this is a round table and this is a place for discussion. I just want to say, though.
Sandy, just name and address for the record.
I'm Sandra Wright, 150 East Street. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Although I'm used to saying Sandra Wright, Plymouth County Commissioner, but you know, that's where I go to other towns. I am your Plymouth County Commissioner. I do service 27 towns. I go around to all 27 towns, no matter where they are. I have never experienced hate or discrimination. I really believe that how you approach people, you treat them with respect, you will get respect. You're not given respect, you have to earn respect. So I don't know really what all of this talk is. I've never felt it in the town of Bridgewater. I've been here for 45 years. I've never had a problem with really anybody. But it's really sad that we have to come to this point where we have to start arguing and fighting about these issues. Aren't we the problem right here? So I think it's how you're brought up in your homes and how you relate to other people and, but just give people respect and you'll, you'll get respect back. Like I said, through the 27 towns, and I don't go to just the towns and sit amongst all these nice people. I'm out on the streets, under the bridges sometimes. I talk to a great many people. I talk to, I'm also on the suicide commission, so I, I'm dealing with people who are on the edge of committing suicide. But, you know, it's a tough world, and, you know, you have to suck it up sometimes. But just treat people with good respect and you'll get it back. I'm really sorry that we have to go through these times. There's absolutely no need for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Go once, go twice. Okay, thank you, everyone, for who came up and spoke. You know, your passion is heard, and we appreciate your coming. We will now turn it over to some council comments. We will do that, and then we do have to go to executive session. So we'll go through council comments. I'll start first with Council McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. It saddens me to hear. I'm sorry. I hope people stop attacking one another. She's upset, which is making me cry. I stand on what I believe, and I think we all can be kind and, you know, not put her through what she's going through. So unfortunately, Sonia, even if we did have this resolution, we cannot change these people's hearts. So I'm here for you.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Ms. Strickles?
I have nothing to say.
Thank you, Ms. Strickles. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I find it rather curious and needless to say ironic that just a matter of moments ago, I was reminded by a citizen who took to the podium of the fact that I and a number of other persons in the room are, are old. And I found it particularly interesting and ironic that it was presented in the course of purporting to tell us that a resolution, a resolution is not necessary to provide for a welcoming and inclusive community. But nonetheless, I just want to say that it is within, within the prerogative of this town council to make resolutions from time to time. And a resolution is simply a statement of our sense. It's a statement of our feeling on a particular subject, and we're free to do that. That is our free speech. And we were elected, we were elected to represent the citizens of the town of Bridgewater and to act in the best interests of the town as we understand them, as we see fit. And that's exactly what we do when we, when we prepare a resolution for consideration by the council, such as the one that was before us this evening. So it's a statement of principle, and that's all it is. There's no action connected to it, doesn't require anything. After it's all said and done, it in effect would wind up on, as a plaque on the wall like the one downstairs that we've been referring to from some years ago. It's simply a statement of principle. But I think it's important, particularly at times like this, that we elected officials in every role, in every community, stand up for statements of principle, because in so many respects, principles are being thoroughly eroded in other offices around the country. And we're not trying to make this a national issue. We're trying to talk about civility and respect here in Bridgewater. That's all we're doing. So I'll be happy to continue to work on that and to continue to support that resolution in the future, and I look forward to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Lindy?
Well, as I said before, I'd like to see some kind of a middle ground. I'm a middle child. I grew up in Brockton, where it was diversity central, okay? I came over here, there were a few Brockton people in the, in the room, but I also knew Sonia's grandfather very well, okay? I'm a member of one party, he was a member of another party. They can excommunicate me from being in one party for openly supporting a member of another party, but he was a good man, okay? And I'm sorry she's having to sit here and deal with this. But I will not put up with someone in this audience texting me, "You made the wrong decision," with an exclamation point. I'm not going to identify who that person is, but that's disgusting. And that's all I'm going to say. End of story.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I would just like to, I would just like to offer support to Councilor Strickles as well, too. There was no intention of where this was taken. I believe firmly that it was a time to reaffirm our commitment, and so that's why I did bring it forward, and I'm happy I did so, and will continue to work with folks. And, you know, I'm pleased to say that I think civil discourse is something that's a lost art nowadays. I respect the folks that came up and spoke on both sides. I do agree, and hopefully I was seeing through the amendments made tonight, that there are changes that can still be made towards this, but there is still a commitment to be made in my eyes. And so I'll continue to fight for that and continue to push that forward. And again, Councilor Strickles, I think, you know, folks here on the council support you and are saddened to see that language that was put up today. So again, I just wanted to apologize to you that you had to experience that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Ellinburg?
Yes. A couple things. First of all, we've got DEI and sanctuary city subterfuge language, which I believe can be interpreted by the feds to be defiance of federal authority. And I do not think that that leaves us in a good position to obtain federal funds. Now, instead of obtaining federal funds, we can do an override of taxes upon the taxpayers. That's another way that we can get our money. But I personally would rather get our money through federal funding and grants and state grants and state funding. So that's why I don't think that this is a wise thing to be doing. Secondly, I reiterate, as a person of faith, it is incumbent upon each of us to treat everyone with respect, dignity, and be a good listening ear and so forth. And so I do not think this resolution is needed because I think that people need to examine their souls, that they are behaving the right way in life. Now, turning to another topic, we have the ad hoc committee, which has said that there will be four people. Councilor Perry told me there were 27 applicants. I am concerned.
There were 26, just to get the number correct.
26, okay, because Councilor Perry told me personally 27. In any case, 26, 27. There's quite, probably quite a few people in there that were quality and were not given or were given short shrift. So unfortunately, the majority of the council, five members, have not been partaking in the interviewing that took place on February 8th. The majority of the council is outside of the ad hoc process. I fear that good old boys and same old, same old is going to be directed towards us. So I would say that this needs to be opened up to the rest of the council, and what is going on now is anti-democracy, frankly, by cutting out elected people, by cutting out elected counselors. So, anyway, I guess that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Ellinburg. Mr. Loretty?
Thank you. Ms. Strickles and I had a conversation earlier today, and I gave her my support privately, but I wanted to publicly give my support for her. Didn't get a chance to mention that earlier. I personally condemn the language that was used towards her, and there's no place for that in, in society at all. Despite being generally opposed to the resolution earlier, due to its broadness and lack of clarity, I do look forward to continue putting forward initiatives which improve the lives of our citizens here in Bridgewater, you know, with, with action. And, and that's all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Loretty. I too will share my sentiments to Ms. Strickles for her upset. There's no place, there's no room for any type of derogatory language to any counselor, whether before a meeting, during a meeting, after a meeting. We're all here as volunteers to try and represent you, to try and represent Bridgewater in the best way possible, helping to lead this town forward in a positive direction. Unfortunately, political climate in recent years has put everyone on extreme sides, one side or the other. No one's coming together in the middle. And this is potentially why the language of this resolution was brought forward again to reiterate bringing community together. Now, it might not be exactly right. I don't know that yet. I'm going to dig into it some more between now and the next meeting. I'm also going to find out if I'm also going to find out if there is any potential, you know, loss of federal monies. I don't know if that's the case. That could be rhetoric. But in the end, we're all here as volunteers. There's no pay. We're here to try and do a good job for the citizens of Bridgewater. And no one should be attacked by verbally, by written word, for their actions of what they're doing here. If you want to do better, then put your name on a ballot and get yourself elected onto this town council. That's all I have to say. With that, I do need to move to executive session, so I need a roll call. Oh, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. In a second. Oh, sorry. Oh, I need to read my exec, I'm sorry. All right. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So move. In a second. And I need a roll call vote, please. Roll call. Counselor Loretty? To move to executive session. Moving to executive session.
Yes.
Can guys leave him, please? Are you down as you exit, please? We're trying to take a vote here.
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Lindy?
Yes.
Counsel Chase?
Yes.
Counsel Strickles?
Yes.
Your counsel McGrath?
Yes.
Favorite zero vote.
Thank you. We are adjourned and moving into an executive session.